The situation surrounding the coronavirus is changing rapidly.
Try to make sure you wash your hands, prevent touching your faces.
Though the public health threat in Maryland remains low, every level of government is working diligently to prepare for all possible scenarios.
I want to assure you that we are prepared to prevent and limit the spread of coronavirus in our community.
Welcome to the City of Laurel's second virtual town hall on the coronavirus or COVID-19. I'm Communications Director Audrey Barnes. This has been the deadliest 72 hours in the state of Maryland for the COVID-19 coronavirus to date. Nearly 400 people have died and the numbers are growing. We want to applaud each and every one of you for what you're doing to slow the spread of COVID-19, and we're doing our part also. That's why there is no audience here tonight, just a few people scattered around the room to be with us tonight. Our panelists are also spread out so that we can maintain the proper social distance from each other. And just like we did during our first virtual town hall last month, we are inviting you to participate. We want to make this a two-way conversation. So, there are a number of ways that you can get involved with us tonight. You can call in your questions, and that phone number is (240) 294-1308. You can also email us a question at laurel.OEM@laurel.md.us. OEM, by the way, stands for Office of Emergency Management. And you can also put a question under the Facebook Live feed on the City of Laurel Government Facebook page. We also have another post at the top of the page if you want to just leave a comment there. We'll try to search around and find them either way. So now let me introduce our panelists tonight. Joining us is Laurel Mayor Craig A. Mo. Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Joseph Wright is here from the University of Maryland Capital Region Health. Thank you, Dr. Wright. Stephen Allen is our emergency manager. Thank you, Steve, for being here. Dr. Uzo Unnebu is the City of Laurel's Health Officer. Thank you, Dr. Yu. We appreciate you being here. And Laurel Police Chief Russell Hamill III is with us tonight as well. Thank you all for being here. So much has happened since our first virtual town hall on March 12th. Let's take a look at the numbers. There are 10,784 cases of the coronavirus in Maryland and 392 deaths in our state. There is a little bit of good news, though. 736 Marylanders have recovered from COVID-19 and been released from isolation. Let's get the very latest tonight from Mayor Mo. Mayor?
Thank you, Audrey. I do want to acknowledge a couple of our council members that are in the audience with us as well, as our council member Valerie Nicholas is with us, as well as Council Member Mike Les. So, thank you all for being here. Good evening to everyone. Thank you very much for tuning into tonight for our second virtual town hall meeting regarding COVID-19 pandemic. I do want to acknowledge the hard-working city employees for all of their efforts in preparing for and addressing the needs of the community during this very rapidly changing environment. To all of our police, fire, rescue, EMS, and other first responders, to our nurses and doctors and their support teams, thank you all very much for your dedication and your sacrifice you have made. We send each of you a virtual hug, and we say thank you during these very difficult times. Each of you have made a difference in the lives of many in the Laurel community, and again, your service has been acknowledged here tonight, and we thank you. To the residents of the Laurel community, I want to thank you and acknowledge your patience and understanding. Many of you have volunteered to assist and to work with us, and I appreciate that greatly. The situation surrounding the COVID-19 is changing rapidly, and your city is continuing to adjust. We have implemented a 90% staff reduction of city employees at the municipal center. We have enhanced our telework program to promote staff to work from home. Currently, we have 60 staff members working from their homes. A 50% reduction at the Department of Public Works while they're still providing the essential services. Our police department has maintained adequate staffing levels to meet the needs of the community and maintain officer safety. City playgrounds and facilities continue to be closed, and homeowners associations were directed to have playgrounds closed as well. All city basketball courts and areas around the courts continue to be closed, and the homeowners associations were directed to close their basketball courts as well. As I have mentioned to you at our last virtual town hall meeting, we continue to prepare for the worst and always hope for the best. Our emergency manager, Steve Allen, continues to monitor and to work with our public safety and our public health officials at the county, state, and federal levels of government. Steve continues to coordinate with our city health officers who are with us tonight and follows the guidance from the CDC, the state and county public health departments. On a personal note, I want to thank Steve publicly, his dedication to his work and his coordination with city departments, organizations, and other EOCs around the county during these very difficult times. So, Steve, again, thank you very much. City departments continue to follow their contingency plans and their coronavirus workforce action plan that provides guidance and procedures for keeping our employees safe and the community safe as well. I can't thank our communications department enough. They also do an outstanding job pushing out the same critical messages and information from the CDC, the Maryland State Health Department, and the Prince George's County Health Department regarding the pandemic. And they're doing a lot of others, which I'll talk about a little bit later in my remarks. Tonight, we take additional steps to continue our efforts to keep the public updated and prepared during this pandemic. This is why I'm glad you have joined us tonight for our second town hall meeting regarding the pandemic, an important discussion between our community partners and your government. As this is our second virtual interactive town hall meeting, I encourage everyone to take part by calling, emailing us, or sending a message on Facebook Live. Tonight, you will again hear from the experts in the field of public health and emergency management. I want to thank our panelists tonight again for their time and their assistance and being part of the solution to help us along here in the City of Laurel. Please remember that I don't want anyone to panic. We understand the unknown is scary and creates anxiety. We at city government are ready to assist you in your time of need. We have an action plan, and we stand ready to assist. I want to thank Governor Hogan and County Executive Olson-Brooks for their leadership and transparency in ensuring that the state, county, and local communities are safe. Your city officials will be following and enforcing the governors, the county executives, and my executive orders, directives, and policies so that we can help slow the spread of this deadly virus. These orders will be enforced by the Laurel Police Department and the staff at the Office of the Fire Marshal and Permit Services, and those in violation will be held accountable. Tonight, I want to pass along some information to you that I believe is useful and very important. And the first is, again, to remind you to take the time to fill out your census form. We have 47.7% of self-response to the census. You can see that it is critical, and it's very important. So, please take that time. President Sidney Nor has announced that the mayor and city council meetings will hold their meeting on Monday, April 27th at 6:00 p.m. The city budget will be introduced for FY '21. That night, the second public hearing will be on Monday, May 4th at 6:00 p.m. We will be using GoToMeeting for the public so that they can take part and participate. So, look for further information as we get closer to the 27th. All of the work sessions will be on the same dates, and they will start at 5:30. On Saturday, April 8th, starting at 7:00 a.m., the governor's executive order will go into effect for everyone, requiring the use of face coverings and making sure that your nose and your mouth are covered. The entire executive order will be placed on the city's website, so you can check it out. But if you're out and about, we just encourage you to go ahead and put that on, and it will be required by all. We have established several telephone hotlines that can assist our residents if they have questions or need assistance. Our emergency operations center is (240) 294-1314. Our senior information hotline is (240) 517-7974. Our business information hotline is (301) 356-3876. And we also have our Spanish hotline for information set up as well at (240) 805-3167. All of those numbers are on our website as well. We also have started a healthcare gratitude challenge on our social media platforms. Let us know if you have a special healthcare worker that you'd like for us to acknowledge and thank. Send us their photo and their name to socialmedia@laurel.md.us. I announced that we will be canceling the city's 150th celebration events through June to include the annual Main Street Festival scheduled for May 9th. We will work hard to reschedule this event before the year's out, if it is safe to do so. Please check out our virtual family fun page located on the website. Includes virtual events and activities for the entire family. We've established a chat with the senior citizens. Three times a week, we'll send out reminders for you to call your senior relatives or friends at 7:30 to check on them and to connect with them. We'll also be asking senior citizens who'd like to be called on Sunday nights at 7:30 p.m. to sign up in our program. I'd like to also acknowledge the volunteers that have already called and offered their services on a weekly call. If you'd like to take part in that, you can call (301) 725-5300, extension 2110, or you can also send an email to cmjohnson@laurel.md.us. I encourage you to follow along on one of our many different platforms on social media to be informed and updated. Time is never on our side when dealing with an emergency, but tonight, I would like for all of you to know that you have a city council, a management team, a dedicated employees making sure that Laurel is able and ready for what may come next. We call them Team Laurel. We have a long way to go, and it will require all of us working together. Remember to stay home, to cover up, to help save lives. On behalf of the mayor and city council, thank you for tuning in tonight. We look forward to your questions, and I want to remind everyone that we're all in this together. Thank you. Thanks, all.
Thank you very much, Mayor Mo. Words to live by. We are all in that together, all in this together. The City of Laurel's Health Officer, Dr. Uzo Unnebu, is with us tonight. And, Dr. Unnebu, I want to just talk about what's happening here in Prince George's County, Maryland. There are more cases of COVID-19 in Prince George's County than any other place in the state. First of all, why is that, and what can we do to stop the spread here?
Thank you, Audrey. And Mayor, council members, Dr. Wright, yeah, actually, this is becoming a problem for us. There are high numbers of mortality and mobility of this COVID-19 due to there's more testing that we're having now, which we have actually a testing center over at the FedEx Stadium. And another reason is, in PG County, the residents are in the service industry and healthcare, which makes more exposure for them. Lastly, we're seeing a lot of asymptomatic people spreading the virus. So, with all these in combination, it's actually making the numbers to be higher. To slow the virus down, it actually requires a behavioral change for all of us, more of a stricter practice of social distancing. Frequent hand washing should be enforced, which in turn limit the spread. And adhering to the declarations that we've been hearing from the governor, from the county exec, and from the mayor, just this is one of the ways to be able to slow down the spread, as the mayor had actually mentioned earlier today.
Now, we've all seen the videos from doctors and nurses and anyone in the hospital. They're really heartbreaking stories that they're sharing with us. What are you hearing from your colleagues in the healthcare field here in Laurel?
Yeah, it's heart-wrenching, like you said. My colleagues, they share same sentiments across the globe regarding the need for adequate PPEs and more testings. The demand for these equipments outweighs actually the production of them. The need for beds in Laurel has been approved by the Governor Hogan, and thanks to UMS for being able to fill in the gaps for some of these demands, too.
So, is there anything else we can do to help?
Well, the best way, I think we've been saying that all along, is stay home. Right now, we're mentioning cover up, but there are other things that I would recommend. First is that the transmission is controlled. And then, second is that the health system capacity is in place to detect tests, isolate and treat every case, and trace every contact. And third is that the outbreak risks are minimized in special settings like health facilities and in the nursing homes, like I go to nursing homes, too. And then, fourth is that the preventive measures are in place in the workplace, in schools, and other places where it's essential for people to go, like in the shopping malls. And then, fifth is that the communities are fully educated, engaged, empowered, and to adjust to the new normal.
Thank you very much for sharing all that great information and for helping us weather this coronavirus storm over the last few weeks. We appreciate all the help that you've been giving the city.
Thank you.
The City of Laurel's Emergency Manager, Steve Allen, stood up our emergency operation here at the Laurel Municipal Center 42 days ago, and he's been working tirelessly ever since then to help keep us safe, all of our citizens, our employees, and visitors here to Laurel. And Steve is with us tonight to share the very latest as we prepare for the surge, which is still a couple of weeks away in Maryland, isn't it, Steve?
Yeah, as soon as I fix my hearing aid, I'll be okay. Yes, that's correct, Audrey, and thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council members and everyone in the room and everyone in the Laurel area. This is a long-term incident. Like Audrey said, the emergency operations center here in the city has been operating for 42 straight days with personnel working both in the EOC and City Hall and teleworking. A couple of our main objectives is our seniors to look after and take care of them, provide them with whatever they need, and then we're doing that through the senior hotline. Also, the businesses, both small and large, we're working with them to meet their needs as much as possible. Another important project that we're working on is food distribution within the city and the Laurel area. We're working with Lars, the Laurel Advocacy and Referral Services, the Fish of Laurel, Elizabeth House, St. Mary, Mills Catholic Church, and the Islamic Community Center of Laurel, and First Baptist Church of Laurel. We have formed a food distribution task force, and this task force has been meeting regularly. We just finished our first report, and we gave it to the mayor today. It gives a total look at the food distribution in the city for the homeless, for the needy, for the disadvantaged, and for anybody who needs food. We identify shortfalls. We're working with all them organizations to both address the shortfalls, and now, starting tomorrow, we're going to start looking into the long-term food distribution. We'll be coordinating with them with the delivery of both meals and water, and we're setting up a strong distribution system with the help of all volunteers and, of course, the city staff. We continue to coordinate with Prince George's County, with the state of Maryland, with both FEMA and the Department of Health and Human Services. We sit in on about five or six conference calls a day to exchange information with the county, with other municipalities, with the state, and with the feds, all working in collaborative efforts to slow the spread of this vicious disease. We're ready to assist any citizen in Laurel or Laurel area if they need help. Please call the hotline numbers that the mayor announced earlier. These are answered. We get right back to whoever asked a question or has anything that they need. We pride ourselves in being able to handle almost 99% of the requests that come in on all of them lines. We don't know if you don't call in. If you got a question, we fielded a lot of questions about testing and COVID-19 testing. We have the Prince George's County Health Department's hotline, which is (301) 883-6627. They are getting a tremendous amount of calls specifically about testing. Prince George's County has a test site set up at FedEx Field. You have to have an appointment to go there, but if you need information, please call that hotline. If you can't get through the hotline, contact us, and we'll assist with that. We have a very committed and dedicated emergency management team led by Mayor Mo, and we're here for the long duration. We are ready to assist, and we'll do anything that we possibly can to assist. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Steve. We appreciate that. We want to take a phone call now because we want to let you know that we are listening. We're waiting for your questions, and it's very important that we hear from you. So, before you give us your question, just make sure you turn down your television so we don't get a lot of feedback. But caller, go ahead with your question.
Yes, I have a question. As we move into the weeks ahead, as a citizen of Laurel, what can we expect to see taking place at the Laurel Hospital? You know, we're all concerned with treatment.
Dr. Joseph Wright is here from the University of Maryland Capital Region Health. That includes the Laurel Medical Center. Dr. Wright, are you ready to tackle that question for us tonight?
Certainly. And first of all, I want to thank Mayor Mo and the council for hosting this town hall. A lot has indeed happened since we were last together, including the recommissioning of the Laurel Medical Center to receive patients on the inpatient basis. The project to create 135 beds at the Laurel Medical Center, which we refer to as the Laurel 345 Project, because we're building those beds on the third, fourth, and fifth floor of the Laurel Medical Center, is scheduled to open next week. We have been hard at work as a health system, the University of Maryland Capital Region Health, to restore those floors. Those 135 beds at this point are designated to include 10 critical care beds, 12 intermediate care beds, and 113 med-surg beds. And the goal here is to meet the surge demand. Audrey, you asked Dr. Nagbu a moment ago, are we in the surge? It certainly feels like it. I will tell you that in the weeks since we were last together, the crush of patients that have been seen across all of our campuses here in Laurel, in Chevrolet, and in Bowie has really escalated, and particularly here in the last week. All told, over the course of the last several weeks, we have tested almost 1,000 patients coming through our health system. 313 of those patients have tested positive, and if you do that math, that is something like 30% have tested positive. That's a high number. In the ZIP codes that constitute Laurel and Prince George's County, 25 patients have tested positive. So, we have a burden of disease here locally that obviously has already been stated, makes us the epicenter of the state, but also the great concern are the number of patients who are presenting with either pre-existing or comorbid conditions, which is the way we describe it. And what I mean by that is, we have a large population who have underlying conditions, heart disease, diabetes, and those conditions with the added burden of the coronavirus makes it even a more difficult challenge and makes the need, particularly for critical care beds, of great demand. So, we believe that, to answer the caller's question, that these beds, these 135 beds, couldn't open soon enough. This is a partnership with Governor Hogan and the Maryland Department of Health and the University of Maryland Medical System to stand these beds up. And Dr. Treaty Hall, well-known in this community, who is the site executive for Laurel Medical Center, is leading the charge on that effort, and will be excited next week to get this open and up and running.
I'm sure that answers a lot of questions for residents who might have driven by the campus and seen those white tents going up and wondering what was going to go on there at the campus, but we're getting ready for the surge.
Yes, we are.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Wright. I do have a question that came in off Facebook Live, and this caller would like to know, as you say, if we haven't quite reached the peak yet, will there be further reduction of businesses in operation, or has the reopening process begun at all in Laurel?
The reopening of business and the government, actually, we were talking about that earlier today. There is no plan as of yet. We will continue to watch and work with, as I stated earlier, with our emergency manager, Steve Allen, who's communicating with all different levels of government. But as of yet, there's nothing in the works for businesses starting to open up. When we talk about government, we're still operating, we're still open, we're still answering phones. People are working from home, and there's just a very small, probably two or three of us here that are at City Hall. But all departments are open, and we're still, we'll be answering questions, but as of this date, there's nothing unless Steve has anything for it.
And Mayor Mo, that seems to be on the minds of many people tonight. We just got an email on our laurel.OEM@laurel.md.us email address, and the person was asking, what is the timeline for us getting back to normal? I think you've explained that, that we're a long way from that.
I would like to see it sooner rather than later, but I don't think that's going to be, that's not the answer. So, we'll continue to monitor the situations, and we'll work with all levels of government before we do anything. We'll do what's right, and we'll do what's in the best interest of our community.
Thank you, Mayor Mo. As the spread of the coronavirus continues across the country, police officers, first responders, continue to be on the front lines, and that is very true here in Laurel as well. And joining us tonight to tell us about how we're protecting our officers is Laurel's Police Chief Russell Hamill III. Thank you, Chief, for being here tonight.
Thank you, Audrey. Appreciate it. So, I'm very close to the doctor. I'll keep my mask on.
We're going to spread you guys out a little bit.
Much more handsome with this mask on, I'm told. So, first off, I do want to say, even though we're here for a very solemn discussion, today is a celebration in my family. Today is the birthday of my middle son, who's watching this right now, so I want to say happy birthday, Dylan, and I love you. And it's part of what we do is for kids like you, bud, so we're working hard. The Laurel Police Department's working hard. We're still out there. We still have some instances of crime occurring, and we're taking care of that. We're still out there protecting and serving the community. Don't hesitate to contact us. Don't hesitate to call us. We are seeing an uptick in calls regarding violation of the executive orders by the mayor and by the governor. We respond to those as well. We've taken an approach with this that we will inform and educate before we enforce. So, we want to provide the information. We want to provide the education to people of what the guidelines are, and before we want to do any enforcement steps. Thus far, every time we've done this, on every complaint we've had, every time we've come across this, people have complied with what the requirements of the executive orders are. I want to thank the community for that. Normally, what we're seeing is people just don't understand Normally, what we're seeing is people just don't understand what's required of them. Once they learn it from our officers, it works out. So, thank you to the community and people that visit Laurel for doing that. We greatly appreciate it. I do want to thank my officers and my civilian staff. As you know, we've had a few instances, exactly 11 of our, last count of our staff that have been exposed to the virus and have been out of work. Very unfortunately, we've had one that tested positive. They're doing well now, thank God, but we've had at some stage up to 11 out because of the virus and being exposed to it. The one that tested positive is not back yet. Nine others are back and one is pending coming back. But we're actually set up our communications division inside City Hall in Steve's shop over at Emergency Operations because of an issue in our own communications section on the Police Department. And I do want to thank Wreckin' Parks. They've cleaned that very thoroughly, three or four times now, and will be back operational at Wreckin', at Headquarters tomorrow for communications. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the doctor. He's been very helpful, gave great guidance to us to help get us through that. People are scared. This leads to, you know, we're not immune from that. Very calmly helped our people, helped get us through this, and I'm very, very thankful for that.
Chief, can I ask you one question? We're getting a lot of it in all our different platforms about the Amish market. People are asking, have we been checking it? There's a lot, seem to be a lot of people in the Amish market. Can we just kind of spread the word about that? Because I know I get calls on my cellphone about it, and Police Department, our code enforcement, mayor gets them. What's the situation?
So, we're getting these phone calls. We are getting calls for service there. Code enforcement's been there. My officers have been there. One of my captains was there a number of times this past Saturday, which is the day before Easter, which we did get a number of calls about there. I have been there myself and gone into the market to make sure that things were okay. We have not witnessed any violations of any of the executive orders when we've been in there, but we are listening to the concerns of the community. Code enforcement and my staff have had discussions with the owner, and we are hopeful that we'll see absolute compliance going forward to help maintain the safety of the entire community, be able to go in there, do what they need to do, shop, but do so safely and respectful of each other. And we'd like to see that go forward this weekend when they open. But don't hesitate to call us. Don't hesitate to inform us of it, and we're glad to go out. That's what we're here for. We'll go out, we'll see what's actually occurring, we'll take action if we need to take action. We need to educate and inform. We do that. We've done that there, and we're hopeful that going forward, we don't have any more instances of concerns there. Not only are we out here in the protecting and serving, and we don't just do crime fighting, I do want to point out that this past weekend, members of my staff delivered food to some members of the community from the Police Department, and when I just left, they were organizing clothing to go over to Lars this evening or tomorrow to help out there. But also, I want to thank members of our community. When I left, one of my young officers was walking in with boxes of pizza, armfuls of boxes of pizza, and a citizen had stopped by to deliver those to the Police Department to make sure the men and women that are serving you were okay, that they were being fed. We've had lunch delivered to us a couple of times as well. I really cannot thank the members of our community that think of us during, it would be completely natural for people to be only concerned with themselves and their families right now. There's real fear here, but not here in Laurel. People in Laurel are reaching out to the Police Department to make sure that your police officers and civilian staff are taken care of. I sincerely thank you from the bottom of my heart for that. It means a tremendous amount to us.
Thank you very much, Chief. Chief, I want to get to this question on our Laurel O E M email address. This is kind of tugging at my heartstrings, so I want to make sure that the person is still with us and we can get an answer. One of the doctors probably is best prepared to answer this one. And then, Chief, I'll let you finish, but I just want to make sure I don't lose them. This person is asking, "I am a person with a dying parent in another city. Can you clarify the stay-at-home order? Does that mean I can't fly?" Doctors, any guidance that we can give this viewer tonight about that situation?
Well, Audrey, let me speak to the no visitation policy that's been implemented at hospitals across the country. And one of the exceptions to the no visitation rules, obviously, is a situation like this. And I would certainly encourage the viewer, the person who submitted the question, to ensure, first of all, that the institution that they will be traveling to, to visit their relative at the, who is at the end of life, does honor that ability to spend that time at end of life. This is, again, a policy that's been uniformly applied across the country. However, I will tell you that certainly for the University of Maryland Medical System, this is a situation where, an exception, again, the individual will need to, if this is a COVID situation, be in proper protective equipment. The ability to get there is out of my area of expertise, but I would encourage our citizen to make sure that the institutional, wherever their loved one is, does honor that ability to visit.
Thank you very much, Dr. Wright. Chief Hamel, I know you are finishing up your remarks. I want to go ahead and give you an opportunity to do that.
I'll just close out with that. We, follow us on social media. Follow Audrey and O E M on social media. We give out a lot of information there on the Police Facebook and Twitter accounts, and a lot of information about what's going on in the community that can help provide you guys with timely and accurate information to help dispel rumors that start up in the community, that start up, as I said, naturally, these times this happens. You'll get accurate information by following us on these social media platforms, and hopefully that helps calm people down. Thank you all for the time. Audrey, thank you for letting me talk. Mayor, thank you very much.
Chief Hamel, are your officers enforcing the stay-at-home rule here in Laurel? Like, if you see people just milling around in groups and things like that, will the officers approach them and tell them you're under an order by the governor to stay at home?
As I mentioned, we do an education and inform method first, and we've had no issues other than that when we go to that outside of, once we do the education piece and we inform people, everything turns out okay. So, I know myself, I talked to a couple people, park was closed. I talked to a couple people down at the park who were sitting on some benches and the like, just explained to them, park's closed, and people want to do the right thing. People naturally want to do the right thing here, and so, and it's looking out for their welfare and the welfare of their families, so we're finding that things are working out.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Just want to acknowledge some of the comments that we're seeing on Facebook. Thank you, Rick Wilson, Carol Plotnick. They have kudos for Steve Allen and all that you're doing in the E O C, so wanted to give you a shout out from Rick Wilson and Carol. Mayor Moe, this person on Facebook says, "Thank you, Mayor Moe and the city of Laurel for all that you're doing to keep everyone safe and healthy." So, that's a, I'm glad to see that people appreciate all that you're doing and that we have some good news to share tonight. Can we talk a little bit about being outside at these times? We're under a stay-at-home order, but you can go out for essential services and things like getting groceries, going to the doctor, if you need to take a short exercise break or walk your dog, that's all good? Who wants to tackle that question for us tonight?
Yes, that's fine. The only thing that you have to remember is still have your social distancing. So, if you're walking with a loved one, you're still supposed to maintain the social distancing. If you go to any of the stores, your grocery stores, any of the big box stores, the pharmacies or whatever, be cognizant of the fact that now you need a mask to go in. And also, once you go in, you have to maintain your social distancing inside the establishment. And also, it's best that not only you have a mask, but I would suggest take a pair of gloves, if you have a pair of gloves, and that way, you're very well protected. Also, once you get home, especially from the grocery store and you take all your stuff out, throw your bags away, make sure that you can disinfect the stuff that you bring home, and also make sure you wash your hands real good after you get done to be on the safe side.
Thank you very much. I saw a picture from the Laurel Medical Center of some of the doctors and their handmade face coverings. Dr. Wright, are you seeing that, that some of the staff are coming in with their own masks and things like that? Is there, tell, work us through this. Is any mask good enough, these paper ones? Or is that any better than, or any safer if I would have one made of cloth, like a bandana or something?
So, Audrey, I'm wearing a cloth mask, and I'm wearing a cloth mask. My role as an administrator is not bringing me in direct patient contact in the hospital, so I am safe wearing a cloth mask. This is basically to protect people from me, for our workers. So, that is a lowest level of covering. Second level would be individuals who are in patient contact and they wear a surgical, medical-grade mask, similar to some of the masks that, for instance, the mask that Mayor Moe is wearing tonight. And then, for our workers who are involved in invasive procedures, for someone who has to go on a ventilator, for instance, there is the highest level of personal protective equipment that is worn. So, I do want to, first of all, I would be remiss with regard to acknowledge, not, to acknowledging the public, because this is a mask that was made by a citizen for our medical center, and they are continuing to produce masks for our non-clinical and administrative personnel. The other way we're using these masks as well is to protect the medical-grade mask. As you know, there is a pipeline shortage with regard to the production of personal protective equipment, and by wearing a cloth mask over the top of an N95, that's the medical-grade mask that most of our nurses on our COVID units wear, you extend the life of that medical-grade mask. So, there are many uses for the cloth mask, not the least of which it has brought a great deal of camaraderie. Our first, our workforce is very, very gratified by the support that the community is showing by production of these masks. I would also like to make mention of how important this kind of activity is, because we talk about social distancing. It's really physical distancing that we require to combat this coronavirus. I would contend that we need to be socially connected during this time of physical distancing, and so activities like this, where we're able to virtually come together and communicate, are so very important, especially for our frontline workers, because the last thing you want to have individuals are putting their own safety at risk is to be socially isolated when they come off the job. So, one of the things that we're encouraging, particularly for our frontline workers in the healthcare industry, is to maintain, support one another, maintain social connectedness. We have the technology to do so, and again, just want to acknowledge the great support from the public. It's not just the mask, it's meals, it's encouragement. We had a public safety siren parade come through the campus the other day with all of our local police departments, including Laurel, participating in that, and we appreciate that.
Thank you very much. And you brought up something that's very important to remember, that there are people who are feeling isolated. It's gone beyond social distancing, it's social isolation, and that's why the mayor's chat with the senior citizen program is so important. So far, Mayor, we already have close to 40 people who have volunteered to call our seniors and check in on them. We're really going to put it into force on Sunday night at 7:30, because there's a lot of people who need those phone calls.
Good. That's great. Thank you. Audrey, if I could take just a moment, I'm getting some text messages about the Amish market again. I want to just, we heard what the chief said. I want everybody to understand, it is a statewide executive order that the governor has put into place, which requires people that work at these facilities now to wear masks, along with other measures. They have, the Amish market has been educated. Now they will be held accountable. So, I think we've educated them. I'm hopeful that that takes care of the issue there. If not, I encourage people to take pictures, and, you know, if there is a violation, and let us see that, because a picture says a lot when we go and visit these stores. We're not in the business of putting people out of business. We're trying to help business, we're trying to help the community, and it's going to require all of us, as I said in my remarks, all of us working together. I did want to say just one other thing. We are trying to, when we go out and buy lunches or we do things, or dinners, depending on when you're here, we've been trying to support our local business, and I encourage others to do that as well. I've probably put on 20 pounds more now that I've been out eating it.
So, you're the one that's the Takeout Tuesday person? Is that you?
That's not my idea, but I take out Tuesday.
Takeout Tuesday.
But I did want to talk about the masks, because if you are looking, the city was able to find two businesses here in the community, there may be others. Zips is selling masks for a reasonable price, I think, reasonable price. These are not the paper, these are the, as you heard from the way the doc has his material. And also Marilyn Johnson down on Lafayette Avenue, her business also. We purchased roughly a couple hundred masks from these two individual businesses, not only to help them, but also to make sure we had the supplies we needed for our employees as well. Thank you.
While we're on the subject of masks, I think we need to reiterate that the governor's executive order requiring masks in all retail organizations goes into effect 7:00 a.m. on Saturday, and so that's when customers will have to have those masks on, and also the employees, 7 o'clock on Saturday, everybody needs a mask.
Even as they're delivering now food and other things, it also takes care of that.
So, we're ramping it up a notch. Dr. Yousen, since you still have your mask on, can you quickly just demonstrate to everyone there is a proper way to take the mask on and off, so that you're not just nullifying all the good that you've done by wearing it? So, walk us through it. How do you do it properly?
Yeah, basically, if you have your mask on and after you finish using it, it's really easy for us to just easily grab it, but when you do that, you're actually exposing, you're contaminating, you know, getting in contact with, if possibly, any virus. So, we always recommend just going by the ears and pull it this way, and then just toss it in the trash can, but don't try to scramble it or anything like that. So, that's our best recommendation at this time. Pull from the ears and then pull it out and then put it in the trash.
Now, when I go to the grocery store, I mean, I'm wearing masks and gloves. So, when I get back to my car?
Yeah, when you get back to your car, the recommendation, because of the gloves that you just used in the shop and by doing all your shopping, you want to be able to take that out, and if there's a nearby trash can or something like that, you could go and put it in there. However, another recommendation that I've read up on is having a separate bag for it, that when you get in your car, you take everything off and put it in that bag, wrap it up, and then dispose of it when you get to your private home or something like that.
Because I think a lot of people may be forgetting, you've got to clean your steering wheel, you've got to clean the door handles.
Correct.
You know, you, don't just do all this good stuff when you're in the grocery store. When you get back in your car, you're bringing all those germs in there, so clean those steering wheels, those door handles, and things like that as well.
Basically, you just, whatever possible, and all of us, we were just here, and some of us, when we finished talking, we tried to wipe the dust, the turps off these areas. That's actually what we're encouraging, just try to do that more often.
You can't clean enough.
No.
I think we have a call. Do we still have a caller on the line that's waiting to ask a question? Caller, just give us your name, turn down your television, and go ahead and ask your question.
Hello? This is for either the mayor or any of the doctors. Just based off the information that you've gotten so far, would you say that all these practices are actually helping, you know, the social distancing and wearing the masks? Are you seeing a difference? Are you seeing a difference because of this?
Thank you, caller. That, that question is excellent. Yeah, using, just, let's use New York as, as an example, you know, where the surge, it was really revved up last, last week, and they're still on it now. But I, I think nationally, we're beginning to see that, as we're practicing these measures that I recommended, we're beginning to see a little bit of a decline. It's not that great, I mean, some, some, some of us may look at it and say, okay, it looks like we're getting there, but the more we are social distancing, the more what Washington has been, more cognitive of our environment, I think that's helping the surge to be able to level off. So, we encourage you to continue to do that. Believe it or not, I think if we continue this way, we may be able to see this wind down sometime in the near future. We're looking at June, July, or something like that. But if we don't practice all these declarations, then this is going to be for a long haul for all of us.
Thank you, Dr. Unebu. Let's take a look at an email that we got into our Laurel O E M at laurel dot M D dot U S email address. This person would like to know, how safe is it to be tested at FedEx Field? Is this the only place we can go, and does it cost a lot to get tested there? Anybody have an experience, experience with testing at FedEx Field?
Yes, Audrey, I'll answer that. Yeah, FedEx Field is up and running. It's very safe. You can even, either drive through, or you can walk up. You have to have an appointment, so you have to call the Corona's hotline, Health Department, and, and get an appointment, but they are up and running. The, if you don't have money to pay for it, that's okay. They have different lines, so when you go up to be tested, if you do have health insurance, you'll go to this tent, and then you'll go to get tested. If you don't have health insurance, you'll go to that tent, and then you'll go get tested. They don't turn anybody away. So, that's not the only site, that's the main testing site in Prince George's County, but there's one in Montgomery County. There's several sites around that you can, you can go, you're not restricted to go on just the one site. But the FedEx site is, is a large site, and they're testing quite a few people, but it is safe down there.
Can you talk a little bit about the need to get tested? You know, this is the type of, time of year where all, everything's coming into bloom. You know, you don't know if you have allergies, or if you have early coronavirus symptoms. Can, can you help us out with that? When do you need to seek medical attention?
I'll just, before, I'll turn it over to Dr. Unebu, because for 42 days, I've been his closest partner. He's told me that first off, you have to check with your primary care if you have one. They know your history, and there again, it could be flu or something, but they know what symptoms to look for. If you exhibit them symptoms, then they can authorize a test, and you can get a test. If you don't have a primary care physician, you can call the hotline, and they will hook you up with one, and they will also screen to see if you have the symptoms, and if you do, and then they'll give you an appointment that way.
Thank you.
Is that correct, doctor? I'm going to be a doctor at the end of this too.
Right. So, is a, is a fever one of the biggest telltale signs that you have possibly been exposed to coronavirus? Because I'm hearing a lot of people talk about dry coughs, and, and sore throats, and things like that, but they don't have fevers. Is the fever the trigger that's really saying you need to, if you have a combination of things, that you've got that fever, you could be in trouble?
Yeah, actually, that's one of the signs and symptoms that we're looking at, but that's one of the major ones. As you can see, even in establishments, before you get into those establishments, they have to check your temperature and everything, because that's one of the telltale signs. But we, there are various different signs and symptoms that may occur. Even I have a colleague of mine, orthopedic surgeon, all he had was just generalized body aches and pains. Eventually, he was tested positive, and then later on, he started having the respiratory problems. So, again, fever is one, and then respiratory problems is the other.
Did you see the police chief slide a little bit further?
I noticed that.
As soon as you said that, he was, he was gone. Halfway down the, you know, Sandy Spring Road by now.
Audrey, let me, let me, on the flip side of that, I also, we are trying to apply some degree of triage, so that individuals do not present to places like an emergency department unnecessarily. However, let me just say, if there is any concern about shortness of breath, or respiratory symptoms that might suggest pneumonia, that is when we do need to see you in the emergency department. So, shortness of breath, which is really one of the screening questions that are asked when we do this kind of screening that Dr. Unebu talked about, is a reason to come into the emergency department.
Thank you very much. Mayor Mo?
I just want to add, from my days of riding fire and equipment and EMS, and the docs may want to talk a little bit about this, especially if you have these signs and symptoms and you're at, you may be at home, and you may have to call Fire and Rescue EMS to come there, they're our first line of defense. And I encourage people to take the opportunity, maybe even sit down tonight when we're done here, write down your medical history, write down your phone numbers, write down the important information, because nobody's going with you in the ambulances, and nobody's coming to the hospital. So, that information is crucial for your health, and I would encourage you to do that. And I don't know if the docs want to talk a little bit more about that, but that is very important.
No, absolutely. It's critically important for, particularly because, as I mentioned, we have a, a, a fair number of citizens who do have underlying conditions. And, and for the knowledge about those conditions, and, and particularly if you're coming in in, in extremis, we need to know what's going on, and then, and having that information available is really a key component to the treatment plan. So, Mayor Mo, I thank you for, for pointing it out, that's a, and not just during a pandemic, anytime. Really important for us to have that, that information about what's going on with your, with your baseline health.
Okay. We have a caller that would like to ask a question of our panelists. Give us your name, and go ahead with your question, please.
A lot of things are going virtual, and a lot of doctors are saying, I had some, I had some symptoms, and they called, and they said we could do telemedicine. Is that really beneficial? And also, can you speak to how do we stay mentally healthy when despite of a pandemic, and it's hit everybody's family pretty hard?
Anybody want to take that one? You, you, we keep, we're learning all these new phrases, like telemedicine now.
Absolutely, well.
Telemedicine is the big one.
You know, there are unintended consequences of, of, of stress and strain, and one of the things that we are absolutely leveraging in the healthcare industry now is technology. And we are doing a lot of our care within the hospital with the use of, of telemedicine, so that we limit the amount of exposure, so we can access consultants that we may need to help us with the care of COVID-19 patients remotely. That helps us to not have a strain on our personal protective equipment in the hospital with a whole rack of people coming in and out of rooms. It also, it limits exposure. And in terms of what the caller's question is, a number of physicians in the community are continuing to interact with their patients remotely using telemedicine. Frankly, the fidelity of the equipment is such that the, I do think it is of benefit, and I certainly think it's, I don't want people not to, to, I don't want people to ignore their healthcare because we are in, in this state. So, many local physicians are leveraging the technology to stay in touch with their patients. So, I do think there's benefit there. And then we'll actually see how it sticks on the other side of all this.
Thank you, doctor. We have an email question. This is for you, Mayor Mo. This citizen would like to know, how can we as citizens support our small businesses during these challenging economic times?
I, as I stated earlier, I think they can support local business, small business. A lot of the restaurants are doing curbside and carryout, we encourage you to, to do that as well, but it's not always just about food. When you need to go get your essential items that you'll need, you go to the different stores. I encourage you to shop here locally in Laurel, keep the money in, in Laurel, in our local businesses. And I encourage those that may be employers, looking for those that have been laid off or put aside until this is over, that they advertise here locally as well. You know, we've got a ways to go on this, and, you know, nobody has a crystal ball to know when we're going to be able to open these places back up. But the more that we can shop locally here in the city, that is supporting local businesses, and that's important during these very, during these times in crisis.
I just want to let the, everybody watching and listening know that you can call us with your questions, and here's the phone number. It's 240-294-1308, 1308. I wonder if anybody has heard much from the little ones in the community? How are the kids holding up? Any news, and what are you hearing from the children in our community? Schools have been out for months now, everybody's getting stir-crazy. I have some senior, high school seniors that live on my street, they're devastated at the closure of school, no prom, no graduation, things like that. Should we be paying especially close attention to our children during this pandemic?
Well, as a pediatrician by training, yes, we do need to pay attention to our, to our children. I mean, this is a stressful time. The, the impact on, on families is, is profound. We're in uncharted territory here with trying to keep children occupied. I, I think that we've seen some creative ways to engage, some, 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 school districts are attempting to continue instruction during this period of time. And I, I do think we do need to pay special attention to, to, to our kids. And when we, when I talked a moment ago about social connectedness, kids need to be included in that as well. One thing we've done in our family is to, to conduct a, a, a weekly, I, I, I don't want to give any proprietary preference, there's a lot of platforms out there through which you can, can do family chats and family meetings, and, and I would certainly encourage parents to include, include their kids in that. But yeah, we absolutely have to pay attention to the kids.
And I, I, my kids are adults now, but I, I feel like I talk to them more now than I ever have in their life, texting, I mean, daily and calling. I think, is that part of the stress of just, you want that connectedness, you want to know that you're okay, and obviously, they want to know that their parents are okay?
Yes, I'm experiencing the same thing, Audrey. My, my, my young men have never been in more contact, even as we sit here this evening too. And I think it's, it's only natural that families want to stay connected, check on each other. I've heard from friends who I haven't talked to in, in years, just check it up. And so, again, I, I do encourage us to, although we are physically distancing, to stay socially connected.
Okay. I want to, I'm seeing some interesting comments up on Facebook. I saw Marilyn, it's called the Sewing Design Studio, so Marilyn Johnson, the mayor, had mentioned she was making face masks, and I believe her business is on Main Street? She's on Lafayette Avenue, so it's sewingdesignstudio.com. Marilyn Johnson at sewingdesignstudio.com, if you want to talk with her about getting a face mask. Thank you, Jim Cross. Jim Cross is even providing the phone number, thank you, Jim. The phone number is 301-604-4139, if you would like to find out about those homemade face masks, yes. Oh, yes, and I have to give a special note and word of gratitude to our social media specialist, Corinne Kobach. She is doing a fantastic job. I mean, for the last six weeks or so, she's been posting pretty much seven days a week, I mean, really, seven days a week, all kinds of information. And what I love seeing are the virtual classroom posts that she's been putting up, and even things that you're seeing in the community, like NASA, NASA has some space programs for kids to tune in. And so, we're trying to share all those kinds of information, and, and pretty soon, we're going to do a, a Facebook Live, or some kind of chat with educators about how they're engaging their children, and how to keep the kids engaged while they're being basically homeschooled by very tired parents who have never done this before. So, thank you, Corinne, for looking out and finding all those great stories. I know the parents out there really appreciate that. And also, I'm getting a note here, on Laurel TV, we have added a lot of children's programming. So, throughout the day, you will see, first thing in the morning, there's cartoons on for kids, just to get them up and get them, get them going. But we have a lot of educational movies and things like that that are on Laurel TV too. One of the callers was asking, how do I find it? If you live within the city of Laurel, Laurel TV is on Comcast, Channel 996 in high definition. We're also on Comcast 71, and if you're a Verizon customer, you're on Channel 12, so that's Laurel TV. And they're handing me another note, just like they do in the telethons. This is from Facebook. Can kids get involved in volunteer efforts, or is it too soon for them to do that? Dave, do you have anything for, for the kids out there that want to help?
Most of the volunteer programs that we're running in, from the emergency operations center, you have to be 16 years of age or older. But if you are 16 and older, and you want to volunteer, just contact us through to Laurel O E M at laurel dot M D dot U S, or contact your department that's handling and coordinating the volunteers. Yeah, we, we accept, if you're over 16, we definitely would, would look for you to help.
Right, especially when you're talking about the food distribution program and, and things like that, 16-year-olds can certainly do stuff like that, so we appreciate all that, all that help as well. Let's see, I'm reading a couple other questions here. This is, as a resident, I read that we cannot show up at Laurel Medical Center if we exhibit COVID-19 symptoms. So, should we just call 911?
So, the Laurel Medical Center, pre-COVID, has a freestanding emergency department, so that has not changed. Citizens can certainly access the Laurel Medical Center through the emergency department. The entity that I talked about earlier, the Laurel 345 Project, where we are recommissioning floors 345 for COVID patients, is, is expressly designed to admit patients who require inpatient care for, for COVID. But certainly, citizens are, they have never not been able to access the emergency department. And certainly, if, if there is the need for them to require inpatient care, they can be admitted right there at the Laurel Medical Center, so.
And, and the 345 Project will be staffed beginning next week, you hope?
Correct. It, it's, it's, it's several components, staffing, equipment, obviously, because, let me, let me just say, the, there was a good job of decommissioning a year and a half ago, so we essentially had to rebuild those floors. So, it's staffing, it's been totally refurbished and equipped, and will be ready to go next week.
Thank you very much. And I was noticing that, and Jenny, I think it is, I hope you're still watching, Dr. Wright just answered your question about staffing LRH next week, so that is the hope, he says, so equipment and, and things like that are coming in daily. Also, I'm seeing some questions about kids helping each other via social media, and using those ties to stay connected with their friends. This is the one time I think you probably will let your kids spend a little bit more time on social media when they're isolated. Let's see, we have another question. Parks and Recreation is post- Parks and Recreation is posting virtual activities for all ages on their Facebook page too. So I bet Joanne Barr is probably watching and called that in to remind everybody. So thank you, Director Barr, for letting us know that Parks and Rec has a lot of virtual things that you can tune in and find out about as well for, for all ages. So check out the Parks and Recreation Facebook page as well. Let's see, I'm getting one more question. Okay. A quick programming note, some of you heard music during the programming. We have called our technicians and that should be clear now. So that's a, for those of you watching on Laurel TV, there was some music playing, we've worked on it and tried to get that fixed for you. Let me just do a roundup of all the panelists as we wind things down and see, do you have any final thoughts, things going on? Chief, let's start with, I guess you're pointing to Dr. Yu. Dr. Yu, you want to have some final thoughts for us?
Well, the journey is here and it's all of us. And I think thanks to Mayor Mo and the county, the council members and also the city of Laurel staff for job well done in making sure that the citizens of the city of Laurel do, are actually well and they adhere to the recommendations of the medical professionals. It's an honor to be with Dr. Wright and Dr. Hall, working with them closely, making sure that the citizens of this city are well cared for. It's also thanks to my bosom buddy, Steve Allen, for, it's an excellent supporter, someone who you can reach out to easily and he can be able to give you that support and vice versa. And then the Chief Hamel, the collaboration that we had a few days ago, it kind of touched my heart to be able to render my services to the officers. But again, let's continue doing what we're doing, social distancing, washing your hands more frequently, covering up more frequently. That should be able to help us during this era. Thank you.
Steve, did you have some final thoughts that you'd like to share? Will the EOC remain partially activated over the next little bit?
Uh, yes. Yes, it will be activated partially until this thing's over. I noticed one of the questions that somebody raised, they wanted to know what the Prince George County Health Department coronavirus hotline number is, three zero one eight eight three six six two seven. So if you have any questions about testing or anything about the coronavirus, please call that. If you don't have a primary care physician, please call that. One final note that I, I would like to say, it, and I have been involved with multiple disasters over my fifty year professional career doing this type of work. And I have to say that the team that is here in Laurel is absolutely fantastic and I wouldn't want to be any other place but Laurel and working with this group and the citizens. The hospital with Dr. Wright, Dr. Nebu, who's taken me almost two months to get his name correct, the mayor, the city council, Bill Goddard, our city administrator, Lou Anne Crook, our deputy, all the department heads, yourself, Audrey, everybody. It's a great team and, and this kind of event brings people together. And we're certainly together and to reemphasize what the mayor says, we will all stay together and we will beat this thing. Thank you.
Chief, we're not going to let you off that easy. I just got another question for you before we wrap things up. It says, today I watched a news story where police officers in another part of the country use physical force to subdue a citizen boarding a subway. What protocols are your officers instructed to use if dealing with someone who is noncompliant with the governor's executive orders?
So Audrey, I've already explained, but I'll do it again. So we're doing educate, inform prior to enforcement. So far, we haven't had to go to the enforcement phase. Our officers are highly trained, highly skilled in what they do. We prefer that we wouldn't have to make arrests. We prefer that we don't have to cite people in this. I'm not going to comment on what occurred in other jurisdiction. I'm certainly not going to comment on something I haven't seen myself. But rest assured, our officers are skilled in applying the law in a proper, fair, constitutional fashion. We practice constitutional policing here on the Laurel Police Department and we will continue to do so. Here's the easiest thing. Everybody's upset. Everybody is a little frayed around the edges right now. I'd ask people just to do a couple of things. Take a step back and think, if this was my family member that could be placed in danger, how should I act? Wear, wear your mask. Practice social distancing. Practice safe sanitation, wiping down, wearing gloves if you have them, social distancing. For gosh sakes, wash your hands. We do all that, we don't have to get to this discussion here. We do all that, we keep each other safe, we keep the community safe. We're all in this together. Let's come out the other side of this in a safe, responsible way. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and happy birthday to Dylan from all of us, from the city of Laurel. Dr. Wright, did you have some final thoughts?
Yes, again, next week we'll be welcoming some four hundred new frontline heroes, medical professionals who will be staffing the Laurel three, four, five project. I, I just want to assure the public that the Laurel three, four, five project is not taking staff away from the rest of the health system. We are bringing in contracted individuals that are going through training now. So we're adding staff to be able to stand up Laurel three, four, five and welcome them to the Laurel community. And again, I, I so appreciate the support from the community and, and please keep us in your, in your prayers, all the frontline providers, public safety, healthcare community. We appreciate all of the support from, from the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Mo, final thoughts?
Dr. Wright, I just want you to know, I have a couple of businesses that are prepared to buy lunch at the hospital for the workers there. I just don't think they knew it was going to be a little over four hundred people. But I'm going to make sure they know. They wanted me to let them know, so I will do that. Again, I want to thank Dr. Wright, want to thank what's going on at Laurel Regional Hospital and the University, University of Maryland, excuse me, I'm going backwards. We look forward to working with you, doc, as well. I just want to absolutely thank the Laurel community. I've always said, you know, it's, we as elected officials, some kind of, are in the spotlight, but it really is all about the community. It's about the people that we have in this community that really do care, that do things like want to buy lunches for people. We've had them come to city hall and do things. So we've, before it got as bad as it's gotten, we were, actually had volunteers out there dropping off pamphlets to residents in a city of Laurel, citywide lit drop. So I want to thank the community in particular and ask for their patience as we move through this. We will continue to provide guidance and as you heard Steve say, he gave you the number to the EOC, please feel free to call us if you're not sure on something or you have some information. From the police department and our code enforcement, we're going to continue to educate and we're going to make sure people are held accountable and understand what these executive orders and these directives are, are doing and why we're doing them. The sooner we can get hold of this and flatten that curb, curve as they say, the, the better it's going to be for all of us to hopefully get back to, I don't think we'll ever be normal. There'll be, for a long time, I think we'll be seeing some changes. But I do want to thank the community. I want to thank Bill Goddard, our city administrator, Lou Anne Crook, our deputy city administrator. They continue to run the day-to-day operations here. It's gotten a little bit different where people are all at home working and everybody, all of the department heads, our senior management staff, all of our employees, they continue to get up and, and go to work, make sure that the services are provided, make sure that things are getting done, questions are being answered. And to the city council who continuously worked with the administration on this pandemic. And we're not done yet and they understand it and they've committed themselves. It is going to be tight budget times coming up. I've been through this before and when we had issues. Local government, municipal government usually starts seeing the effect of, of things like this, the economy going south, usually twelve to eighteen months. That's after the state and the county and others start taking care of what they need to take care of. It's, we're the last on the, we're at the bottom. So we will, for at least the next two years, we are going to see some tightening of the belt, some things that will have to be done, some tough decisions. I think the council's up for it. I think the administration's up for it. We have good and professional department heads that understand what we're going through and how it's still going to continue for at least the next couple of years when I talk about budget and city. But we will continue to move forward, we'll continue to make sure government works and, but it'll be a little bit different as well. So I appreciate everybody tuning in, Audrey. Thank you and your staff for being here tonight to make sure it got on Laurel TV. And hopefully we're going to take care of that as well with some other things that we're working on. So again, thank you all, thank you to all the panelists. We really do appreciate it. And again, it's up to all of us to work together. Remember Saturday, what goes into effect and more importantly, just stay home if you, it's, if you don't need to go out, stay home. And again, we're all in this together. Thank you all very much.
If you would like to re-watch this program, it will be up on the Laurel TV YouTube channel. If you missed any of those telephone numbers, you can wind it back and, and find those phone numbers. And you can also check out the city of Laurel's face, website at cityoflaurel.org to get any of this vital COVID-19 information. Thank you all for watching. I'm Audrey Barnes. You guys stay safe.